Super excited to be here. It's a dream come true for me and I'm absolutely ecstatic to be in this position. So, thanks for having me.
(applause) Now, I'll just go over to Mr. Bush. I'm just gonna go over the accomplishments of the band like you said.
Last season, not just the marching band, but this is the whole school year. A marching band encompasses our group August through October, but they were successful the whole school year. So, I'll start with our marching season. Last year's marching band, we went to several competitions, sometimes two weekends for marching season, like I said, encompasses the end of August through the beginning of November. The first weekend of November is usually when most groups stop. We did do one competition the first weekend in November. And through those, we won several different second and first places. But our last competition of the season, we went to Logan, West Virginia. And at that particular competition, our bands took first place in every category. So, we had first place in our color guard, first place in our percussion. We had first place field commander, which is Olivia Palmer, who graduated this past year. We had the best soloist award in Colby Hampton and then first place overall bands. Not only that, but they've received distinguished scores in every one of those categories since that competition. So, that was a really big deal.[98.42][98.42](applause) We had several, too many to name, more than 20 students in elementary and middle school, students who were chosen and attended the Marshall University Middle School Honors Band and that is Middle School Honors Band, and let me reiterate that we had several elementary school students chosen for that. Then we went to KMEA Festival in the spring. The students scored proficient overall with a distinguished in the sight reading at KMEA Festival. And if you've ever had to play an instrument or sight read or sight sing, that's probably the hardest part. And so, for us to get distinguished in the sight reading is really awesome because if you go into a room, they hand you a piece of music and you're like, "Okay, play it", without looking. So, that was great. And then to finish out our season, we went to Dollywood's Children's Brills competition, where the students from both judges were given a 93 out of 100, which is distinguished ratings for both judges there. And then we rounded out that trip with a concert in front of the Titanic Museum.[166.23][166.23](applause) We had nine students make middle school all district band, and I wanted to recognize them. And I even wrote it down and checked the picture I got everybody. And those students, if you're here, just kind of raise your hand, you'll be recognized. Lauren Blair.[185.01][185.01](applause) Jessie Blair.[187.01][187.01](applause) Blake Bantus.[189.01][189.01](applause) Phillipie Pottle.[191.01][191.01](applause) Bruce Penix.[193.01][193.01](applause) Tucker Graves.[195.01][195.01](applause) McKenna Moore.[197.01][197.01](applause) Ally Thornsberry.[199.01][199.01](applause) And Destiny Burke.[201.01][201.01](applause)
If we could, if we could get all the band members to come up here and just get a picture from around the board table here. Come on up.
I think there's one in the back. (inaudible)
Who's telling me?
Again, thank you to all our band members and you all. I know you've been in banking to state this morning, so we are one of these issues. Let's slip by the side.[244.12][244.12](applause)
Moving on, we have academic teams, FPS teams, CNPS teams who have competed at state and international competition. We will begin, let's begin with Doug York Castle and Heather Campbell. I'll hear no complaints.[265.12][265.12](applause)
So, we appreciate the opportunity to compete. All support the board, Mr. Cox and Davis, to allow us to compete at the international. At state, we placed third. Our project, Project Fiona, was to improve the school environment so that our students feel warm, like we worked on mental health issues. Today, I have Adara Campbell, Alata Skaggs, and Marla Arm with me. And we also had three other members that couldn't come tonight, James Morris, Hillary Anderson, and Mrs. Danby. But we really enjoy working in Johnson County schools, and it's really a great opportunity for our kids.[308.12][308.12](applause)
Let's move on to Highland Elementary with Ms. Andrea Hoss and Ms. Amy Cullen.
Well, I would like to first begin by thanking the Johnson County Board of Education for giving conference, Mr. Bruton Giles. Without the support of our school system and the individual principals at the school, this would not be possible. So, I thank you for giving our students the opportunity to succeed. I'm gonna start with our FPS team. Do I just have one person here for FPS? But our FPS team placed fourth in the state, and that team consisted of Gabe Conley, John Maynard, Kirsten Seagraves, and Sophia Spradlin. Sophia Spradlin.[362.12][362.12](applause) And Mr. Trent Cox was on an alternate team, and he was on a team that placed second in the state.[375.12][375.12](applause) Our CNPS team, Warden Warriors, I'm sure that some of you all saw their coat rack that was hanging in front of the coffee house in Payne's Fields. But I am very proud of this particular team. They worked so hard all year long to warn Johnson County, not just Johnson County, but people in other areas. They have true servants hearts, as many kids do here in Johnson County. But this team was the state champions.[411.12][411.12](applause) And they went on to the international level, and they did not just win first place in one of the categories, for example, the civics and cultural, or the environmental, the health, or human services, or education. All of those are different categories, and they have a first, second, and third place there. But they were the junior overall grand champions.[438.12][438.12](applause) Which means they were first over all of the categories. So, I'm extremely proud of them. That team consisted of Clara Bolden, Madeline Burtlett, Bethany Chapman, Gabe Conley, Trent Cox, Jane Eastet, Mia Eastet, and Maddy Dobell.[462.12][462.12](applause) They were also, in the presentation of action plans, they were international runner-up, which means they had, they devised an action plan for their future scene. And then they had, you all worked what, 30 minutes maybe, to come up with a skit. They wrote a song, they performed a dance, they wrote the skit, and got up and performed it, and were runner-ups.[497.12][497.12](applause) That team is Gabe Conley, Trent Cox, Jane Eastet, Maddy Dobell, John Maynard, Kirsten Seagraves, and Sophia Spradlin. As I said before, I am extremely proud of these students. Here in Johnson County, we have excellent programs here, and as you've heard me say many times, we don't just educate young minds here, but we are growing leaders that will someday grow up and take all of our places, and I'm extremely proud of them.[532.12][532.12](applause)
Thank you, Ms. Hall. And then we'll move on for a combination of Porter Elementary and the middle school. Ms. Burton has been on the pair, so she won't be speaking today. So, she is a spokesperson and a burden. And also, Ms. Brenda Dyer from the middle school, CNPS team.
Okay, you're standing up. First here, representing. Okay. So, Porter Bay top ten at state for SPS. But moving on to the middle school, I have a prepared statement here. Sometimes I can't read words. So, I'm sorry for messing up names. All right. During the 2019 International Conference, the JCLMS CNPS Jules team won grand champions for the middle school. So, Cole Butcher, Chloe Dyer, Emily Farler, Kaylee Gibbs, Constance Martin, Hannah Peadad, Olivia Hackworth, Dakota Shepherd, and Lakin Sayers all won, so.[600.12][600.12](applause) Some of those students could not be here with us tonight. In May, the students were named Healthy Kentucky Policy Champions, and on August 22nd of this year, Governor Bevins will be coming to the middle school for the ceremonial signing of House Bill 11.[624.12][624.12](applause) Furthermore, out of 78 CNPS competitors, Jewel Breakers also won the Beyonder Prize, and this is the third time that our county has received this coveted award.[641.12][641.12](applause) In addition, the FPS team with Emily, Kaylee, Constance, and Hannah, and alternates Cole Butcher, Zoe Curtis, and Mae Tipton, won third place at international competition.[659.12][659.12](applause) Close to 70 teams competed at the middle school level. Emily, Kaylee, Constance, and Hannah, they're all four seventh graders, finished behind two high school teams of ninth graders.[674.12][674.12](applause) Also, tonight, we want to recognize Kalen McKenzie from WR, as she finished third in the individual competition at the junior level.[689.12][689.12](applause) And this is underlined twice. So, as always, without you, the board, support, none of this would be possible, and we humbly and gratefully say thank you.[704.12][704.12](applause)
I want to say thanks again to all of our competitors, FPS and CNPS, with us tonight. I know we have several non-able-to-leave students in July, I know that. Also, a special thank you to parents for getting students back and forth, and for donating, volunteering all your time and efforts that you've done, and our coaches for the time that you've been to work with these kids every day. So, with that being said, if we have all of our members come up together, let's get one big clap.[737.62][737.62](applause)
Did I do all right? Would you tell, would you tell me if I did bad?
I'm just doing what I should do. I'm good to you.
Did I say it wrong?
Hey guys, take it out of the plastic. Mom's really adamant that you do that.
There she goes. Good job.
She's just trying to interject that.
I know.
I told him, I said, "I'm a little complicated, I just don't want to watch."
I can't call the Kentucky Teacher Retirement Board, so I need to verify that I can come here tonight.
Their expression was, "Absolutely not." That is in violation of your no work contract, in breach of your no work conditions. But I can come through and say that you asked me to come here. I'll say one more thing. Hannah told everybody about the Beyonder Award and how our county had been awarded that honor three times. This is the highest honor that CNPS actually gives. I'm gonna go a step further and tell you that Kentucky, the whole state of Kentucky, has only received that honor three times.[826.12][826.12](applause)
Again, thank you all for this year. You can thank me as well, too. Please for me getting another big clap.[838.12][838.12](applause) As well as the students that visited, we will move on to our next recognitions. And we'll begin with the Golden Eagle Award winners. And you all know, many of you know, each month, we do give out an award to the classified employee and certified employee who has been nominated going above the honor of the Golden Eagle. The winners are picked from a selection of names, and they will be given a nice gift, as well as an eagle. And this eagle is special, and it is crafted by the students of Johnson County. The engineering department makes the eagle in the pre-decent, and the art department paints the eagle, and it's always sponsored by Castle Jewelry and Masonic Lot Base for the Golden Eagle. So, moving on with our, we'll begin with the classified employee. This recipient of the Golden Eagle Award was nominated because of the care and concern that he shows both students and staff. A member of the eagle family for 13 years in county. He has been an encourager to men. He makes it a point to speak to students, making sure they know they are wanted and needed at his school. His efforts to make close relationships with staff shows the support of his peers. Another reason for his nomination is an effort that he was forced to make in the building grounds of Highland Elementary. They claim to be a safe place to work in his own school. So, congratulations to this month's classified employee, Golden Eagle Award winner, Mr. James Finney.[961.12][961.12](applause) For a certified winner, simply said, this recipient of the Golden Eagle Award is an excellent educator. An eagle for 24 years, she has dedicated her life to helping kids both during school and after school hours. Her desire to help others succeed is remarkable, is remarkable, noted by our students and staff, as well as the community. She is loved by our students and everyone who knows her. She never fails to help any child or family or community, and desires to see them succeed. She's an elementary math teacher, a math tutor, a high school ACT tutor, and an amazing asset at Black Gap Elementary. Congratulations to Ms. Jeanne Reed.[1012.12][1012.12](applause) Thanks again to both of you.[1020.12][1020.12](applause) All right, now I have one more silver award to give, hopefully they'll do this, but we happen to be, last week, notified of the Best Between the Lakes nominations and winners for all of the different categories, and I have a few things to give out. And we have representatives from each one of our schools or individuals, I do believe. So, first, the Best Between the Lakes Elementary School goes to Porter Elementary. So, come on up.[1050.12][1050.12](applause) I will say Ms. Butcher is at a conference and unable to be here, so she is represented by three fine workers or painters.[1061.12][1061.12](applause) The Best Between the Lakes, Best Middle School belongs to Johnson County Middle School.[1070.12][1070.12](applause) Here, come on up here, Ms. Butcher. I've started. I've started here. All right, congratulations. And the, Mr. Keans, you slipped out. Best High School, Mr. Crumbs had a report, and like I said, Best High School Between the Lakes is Johnson Central High School.[1096.12][1096.12](applause) There you go. And the Best Coach Between the Lakes, Johnson High School baseball coach, Sean Hall.[1109.12][1109.12](applause) Best Principal Between the Lakes, voted on and was given to Ms. Robin Hawsey.[1118.12][1118.12](applause) And the best, voted Best Teacher Between the Lakes from Porter Elementary, Ms. Suzette Next item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from June 24, 2019, regular meeting July 10, 2019, special meeting, and the bills on payroll from July 18, 2019, is there a motion to approve? Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item five, renovation report, Mr. Adams.
On A, I'm going to ask that you approve the payment to Sherman Carter. Again, this is, they're still working with their DFE, the KFIS is still having, KDE is still asking questions, and they want information, so this is part of it, and it's also part of the construction, too. So, I do ask that you approve that payment to Sherman Carter.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Next item, five B, Mr. Adams.
This is the cost of the wood grids for the two projects, the wind and energy. I ask that we approve those as well.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item five C, Mr. Adams.
This is the updated copy of the, the original copy of the contracts of the lots. We do ask that you approve this contract, because it should be everything up to date to this, to this point.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second, motions made, second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item six A, Mr. Adams.
What you have in front of you is the first reading of our new policy updates. We do ask that you go through those. If you've got any questions for the contract, you can at any time. And we'll get an answer to those. Those are the updates that are required by law, for the most part, and recommended by the Kentucky School Board Association. So, this is just the first reading, and we need a motion.
Thank you. Six B, Mr. Cochran.
We're asking in order to keep the safety of the school resource officer on the campus, Johnson High School and Johnson County Middle School, that the board approves the agreement with Johnson County Sheriff's Office upon receiving a data agreement. You have an attached last year's agreement, this one will be the reverse.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Six C, Mr. Cochran.
I'm asking that you approve or pass the A membership for 19th one in school.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item six F, Mr. Cochran.
We're asking, Johnson High School asking approval for a posting change agreement for a quarterly amount of $91. It should save us money on all the posting.
And just like the last year.
Is there a motion to approve? Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item six F, Mr. Cochran.
We're asking the board to approve a mortgage taken from the school credit.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item six F, Mr. Cochran.
We're asking, Johnson High School asking approval for a posting change agreement for a quarterly amount of $91. It should save us money on all the posting.
And just like the last year.
Is there a motion to approve? Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Six G, Ms. Patton.
Yes, the Head Start Director, Robin Sawyer, saw the need to update the salary schedule in that we have a new requirement, some of the teachers have a new requirement where they have to have a special certification, and that had not been included in a previous salary schedule. So, we're asking that you approve that, and then also, she did some updates to make the salary schedule align to the 180 seven-day contract.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item six G, Mr. Cochran.
We're asking the board to approve a creation of a new property that was taken away several years ago. We feel like that would break me up into our students, also to our parents and our community.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Six I, Mr. Cochran.
We're asking the board to approve a mortgage taken from the school credit.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Six G, Ms. Patton.
Yes, the Head Start Director, Robin Sawyer, saw the need to update the salary schedule in that we have a new requirement, some of the teachers have a new requirement where they have to have a special certification, and that had not been included in a previous salary schedule. So, we're asking that you approve that, and then also, she did some updates to make the salary schedule align to the 180 seven-day contract.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item six G, Mr. Cochran.
We're asking the board to approve a mortgage taken from the school credit.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Motion made, and second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Six I, Mr. Cochran.
We're asking the board to approve a mortgage taken from the school credit.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item six F, Mr. Cochran.
We're asking, Johnson High School asking approval for a posting change agreement for a quarterly amount of $91. It should save us money on all the posting.
And just like the last year.
Is there a motion to approve? Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Six G, Ms. Patton.
Yes, the Head Start Director, Robin Sawyer, saw the need to update the salary schedule in that we have a new requirement, some of the teachers have a new requirement where they have to have a special certification, and that had not been included in a previous salary schedule. So, we're asking that you approve that, and then also, she did some updates to make the salary schedule align to the 180 seven-day contract.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item six G, Mr. Cochran.
We're asking the board to approve a creation of a new property that was taken away several years ago. We feel like that would break me up into our students, also to our parents and our community.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Six I, Mr. Cochran.
We're asking the board to approve a mortgage taken from the school credit.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Motion made, and second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. You've got the superintendent's personnel report. You've got one item there, Ms. Patton.
Yes, you can see Allison Cox's name is written there. She is requesting a one-year leave of absence. She is going to be in France as a humanitarian worker, and while she's there, she's also going to be teaching English, but she's also going to be learning the French culture and how to speak French. So, hopefully, she can bring that back to Johnson County students.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item eight, is there a motion to adjourn? Second, motion made, and second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item eight, is there a motion to adjourn? Second, motion made, and second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries.
Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you all for attending.